Well, I have a slight flu. And my voice is not too, too good. But, um... While I was having some, some french fries at a hotel restaurant in New York, I was hearing some, I was hearing some people saying that my visa was revoked. And so, when they heard I was actually in New York when they were speaking, then they said I stole away to get into America. But, let me first of all recognise my friend and colleague, Honorable Robbie Tong, or Minister for Tourism and his wife, and to the other members of the head table, and all of you, my friends from the city of Rosemont. And our school, let me say, Buenos Noches to our Dominican Republic friends here. And to thank you, all of you, for accepting our invitation to be here this evening. We have started, in the month of February, a series of town hall meetings in every constituency in Dominica. Every month, where members of parliament must convene meetings in each village in your community to interact with the people. In your case, you are the city, and you will have opportunity, every month, to meet with ministers of government to speak about your country and your family, and your own aspirations. I will be very brave this evening, and I would like to highlight some points. First of all, in the area of housing, we, as you know, we have, in fact, handed over the 24 apartments in Barfa State. And I see, in the audience this evening, many of the beneficiaries for the 36 apartments in Emzol. So I see many of your faces, who will benefit from that, with those apartments. And I give you the assurances that 98% of those apartments will go for people who are actually from Rosemont Central. So you are rest assured that you will get the majority of the apartments in Barfa, in Emzol. The committee which has been appointed will meet on Wednesday next week to finalise the list, and you will be in your apartments to witness the death and resurrection of Christ. So, you will be, you will, you will celebrate the Easter in your new home, given to you by the Labour Party. But I would like to call, just for a few seconds, my friend, Ms Diola, to the podium, please. Please come. My friend here is 77 years old, and she is one of the beneficiaries of the apartments in Barfa State. Now, this is, this is a clear manifestation of the sense of pride, the sense of achieved hope, aspiration, and a better way of life created by the Dominican Labour Party for many families across Dominica. She's 77 years old, and never owned a home before. Until this Labour Party came into office, she now has an apartment on the home. She, she used to rent on Hillsborough Street. She used to rent on Hillsborough Street. And you see how well I know my people, eh?
I was from Emzol.
Emzol, and then you move somewhere else.
I was from Betong.
Betong.
I went Portasville, and after I went Emzol.
And she spent $900 at Emzol.
And I was paying €1,500.
€1,500.
But €9.50 for the house.
Oh, alright.
€55 for the water and the TV.
I know she is...
€1,005, my daughter sending the money to pay for it. Praise God for this, Gary!
Thank you very much, thank you.
I had two bags, three bags, and two tightly. I run like this.
Thank you. Thank you. So, my friends, this is, this is what, this is what the party is doing across Dominica. Because I have always maintained, always maintained... I have always maintained that a government has a responsibility to look after the unfortunate. We don't, and, and let me make it clear to people, I personally do not do these things to gain political votes. It is, I believe fundamentally, as matter of principle, that if you're placed in positions of influence, it must be to the benefit of people whom you lead. And I believe in ensuring that the struggles which I went through as a young person, that succeeding generations don't have to go through the struggle. And we have to put systems in place, and policies in place, to ensure that every single citizen of Dominica can feel part of this country, irrespective of who you are. And it is important for us as a people to stand in defence and in solidarity of what the government is doing for the people of this country. Because all of the policies, all of the programmes which we have, which we are implementing, and which we have implemented, are not laws. So they can be changed any time by a cabinet. They are policies of the government. Because people say, "Well, government should do those things." But, there are many of you who are older than me, and would have seen more governments than myself. But, many governments never did those things. And it's not that we didn't have these problems before. We always had problems of housing in Dominica before. And, I give you the assurances. With the continued help of the good Lord, we will continue on our programme to eradicate poverty in our country, and to ensure that every citizen has a decent standard of living in our country. I will say to you this evening, the residents of Rosemont, that we have earmarked another 60 units to be constructed on Kennedy Avenue, around the financial centre. So the, the government will acquire this land very soon, and will erect 60 apartment units that will go towards the residence of Rosemont. And on the ground floor of these apartment units, we will have commercial space, commercial space, that will be rented out to a number of the small businesses in Rosemont, who are subjected to very high monthly rents, and sometimes cannot see their way, because there are high rents in Rosemont. So, a lot of the young people who are, who are doing the hair and the nails and the, and the pedicure and manicure, you know, who have little shops and so forth in the city, we will provide adequate accommodation for you at a highly concessionary monthly rental. You also will benefit from the washroom programmes. And one of the challenges we have in Rosemont, it is not that we do not want to build the washrooms, but because of the way that the lots are, and the houses are, it is almost impossible to get the pipes from the septic tank lines, or from your WC lines, to the street, to connect to the system. Um, so because of the way it is constructed, a lot of Rosemont, as you know, we have coes. And then you have to go, and a house there, a house there. So it is something that we have to look at. And we believe that with the construction of the apartment units, we will be able to address a number of your challenges in that respect. Minister Tong spoke very comprehensively about the Rosemont enhancement programme. And, we would have been more advanced with that programme, had it not been for Erica, because priorities had to be shifted. But we recognise that the city is too important to all of us, for it to continue to be in that state. And therefore, we are going about the reinstatement, or the, or the enhancement of the city, on a staged basis. So we started with the, with the bridge, and we'll go along with the retaining walls, along the riverbank and so forth, down to the, to the, um, marketplace. But the very important second phase will be the three streets which Robbie mentioned: Independent Street, Great George Street, and King Joseph 5 Street. And, we believe that, for example, when you'll be walking from Astefan to go all the way down to where Destorat is, you will not have to go up and down with the sidewalks. You will go straight with the sidewalks, because the way, or the way we will construct the sidewalks. So somebody with a, with a wheelchair can wheelchair himself or herself from Astefan all the way down to the old marketplace, based, based on the way we will construct the, um, the sidewalks. And the roadways will be docked so that the cable and the telephone lines and the electrical lines can be underground, and create a better atmosphere for the city of Rosemont. Regarding to, regarding to employment in the city, we have, I, we have employed quite a few people on the NEP. There are some who are outstanding. And, I want to say to, to, to all the young people that this is an opportunity for you to gain experience on the job. And if you sign up, and you are called, you should show up to take up the job. Because sometimes you are called, and you don't, you're not, you're not interested in working. So I urge you that you need to take advantage of the opportunity, because it is, it is a good stepping stone for better and bigger things for yourself, and also a permanent job for yourself. So when I saw the list today, there are a number of you who are employed in various areas. But when I, the, the people at the NEP office told me, based on the report they received, that there are a number of people who they called, and who said they were no longer interested in working. So it's something that you need to address, um, address. So that, but, but we have the names, and we will, Robbie will certainly be calling some of you, um, tomorrow, Monday, to, to, to hear from you again. Regarding to small business support programme, regarding to the small business support programme, we recognise that, as matter of fact, since the setting up of the small business unit, we have given out, by way of grants, to small business enterprises in Dominica, over $20 million. Over $20 million. And, there are several people across the country who benefited directly from this. And were able to create jobs, not only for themselves, but for their community people, and, and some folks in their areas. I am committing to Rosemont Central. When I say Rosemont, I'm talking of Rosemont Central alone. Um, in the first instance, €500,000 for small business support in the Rosemont Central area. I believe that there'll be a meeting next week. Robbie will bring in the small business unit to have a meeting with those who are interested, so there'll be an announcement, so that you can hear more of this. I was late this evening, because I had to stay back to approve some funds under the public support programme, the so-called Red Clinic, to send somebody to Martinique tomorrow morning. The person suffered a massive heart attack, and requires €25,000 to go out to Dominica. And, when people criticise the public support programme, I, I am a bit disappointed, but do you know what I do? I say, I pray to the Father, and I say, "Look, bless them, for they know not what they're talking about." Because, what I have seen, when I decided to set up the public support programme, it was to address some niggling challenges which families from time to time would experience. So somebody wants the glasses, they don't have the money. Somebody may have some difficulties with your light bill. Somebody may want to pay our shoes, or, 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 or two months' rent, and so forth. But when you are, you're confronted as the leader of the country with a situation where a family, for example, haven't tried to have kids for a long time, and unable to do so. And then, one year the good Lord blessed them with a child. And the child is born, and the child is born in a heart, in a hole, in a hole in the heart. And the child requires €25,000, the family requires €25,000, or €4,000 US dollars to, to transport the child. Otherwise, the child will die. Now what do you do as the Prime Minister of the country? Do you, do you tell them, "Go and pray, and everything will be okay"? That's not what, I believe, the Lord put us to do. He uses us as mediums and vehicles to do his work. And, and we started helping people through this medium. And I can say to you, that had it not been for the public, and I always ask myself, you know, in my own reflections, what happened, what used to happen to our citizens before these programmes were in place? You know? And, while, while I'm unable to see everybody at a time they want to see me, how many of us had access to the Prime Minister? I came from the Freedom Party, I was in the Freedom Party, I was the, um, the YFM. And, I was lucky to have met Ms Charles on numerous occasions, because when she come to Vicar, she'll be at my grandmother's home. And my aunt would report to her from time to time in the office, and I would go with my Auntie Rosa to meet with Ms Charles. But outside of that, how many of us had access to meeting Ms Charles? You know, so, and it's not that, it's that a Prime Minister time is very limited, probably a lot of things to do. But, but when, when, when you have, when you have these programmes which never existed, how do you, what, what people used to do? And the response, the UDOTP would say, "Well, things were better then." Things were better then, that's the response and so forth. But we know bet, we know better, we know better. So the public support programme is an important instrument the government uses to address people's problems and challenges. You know, what do you do with a single mother? Who comes to you, the father bannons the kids, and, you know, for one reason or the other. They, I mean, she has four kids, you know, rent, and sometimes families have to make some tough decisions. Do I pay the landlord today, or do I buy food with the money? And these are tough decisions which families must take from time to time. But when the family comes to you, as the Prime Minister of the country, what do you say to this family? Do you say, "Well, you know, let it, let it, let her put you outside, well, go by the roadside and so forth"? And we help, we help people, we help people to address those issues for the public support programme. And, we'll continue it, because we believe it's an important instrument, it's a valid medium that has been helping scores of citizens to address their day-to-day challenges in our country. Now I speak to the issue of government revenue and expenditure. And as I keep saying to people, the government has very limited means of raising funds, or money, to address the problems. And Dominica, from its history, both pre and post-independence, has never been able to take care of itself fully. Ms Charles was called a beggar for going out and raising funds for Dominica. Edison James could not be called a beggar because he was a lazy Prime Minister who wasn't interested in people. But, and but Ms Charles understood that she cannot build Dominica, or rebuild Dominica after Hurricane David, and after Hurricane Allen, by sitting in Rosemont. She had to go out and cultivate friends, reach out to countries and institutions, travelling extensively to bring some kind of financial support to our country to address our issues. Now, you were able to finance government programmes by way of taxes, by way of loans and grants, and also what you call non-tax revenue sources. Now, none of us here, none of us here in this country, including myself, would like to pay more taxes. I said to, in Lapland, some nights ago, that I make noise with the Ministry of Finance and the Government all the time for taxing my salaries so high. I don't want to pay more taxes. And I don't think any one of us would like to pay more taxes in our country. Loans, you have to borrow from banks to do things in the country. But you must have the means of repaying those loans. You can't just go and take loans and not be able to pay. And you must present, the same way when you go to the bank as individuals for mortgage, you must present your audited statements, or your slip, your pay slips and your expenses. It is the same thing we have to do as a government. When we go to the city, we can also show and say, "Well, I want a loan", and they give it to you as a government. You must present documents to them, and they must assess whether you, you as a country will have the ability to repay those loans when they are due. So you have to have the means to repay. And the third area is grants. That is money given to you by friendly nations or institutions, which you don't have to repay. And then you have the sale of state assets, land and houses and, and the likes. Then you have the citizenship by investment programme. Now, it is most dangerous for any country in the world, Dominica included, to rely on the CBI funds for recurrent expenditure. Because, in a layman's understanding of the funds, it is like somebody who is working at a restaurant, who has a salary for the month, but who will from time to time get a tip. The person cannot rely on the tip to pay his light bill and his rent every month, because sometimes a whole month goes by, and you will get one tip. You understand? So you cannot use the, the CBI funds for recurrent expenditure. This is why we are utilising the funds to create a better economy, to expand the economy, so that, and to reduce poverty, so that you can see a multiplier impact on the economy, so it can generate revenue for you through the tax system. And that's how we spend the monies. This is why you have seen that we have put monies at the aid bank for farmers, and for the hoteliers, and the restaurateurs. That's an investment the government is making. Because when they start repaying, it will come back to the government, and succeeding governments will get this money to spend as time goes by. And that's why we put it, we spend it in housing, and eradicate, um, the pithlatrins and the small businesses. Because housing is one of the indices regards to poverty. And if you can improve people's housing condition in the country, and send it access to proper sanitation, this will help reduce the rates of poverty in our country. Because if people have access to portable water, portable water, they have access to sanitation, they have access to better housing. So, once somebody is taken from a broken-down home, and placed in a good home, properly maintained, that person's way of life is automatically increased and improved. And that's what it is. So we spend these monies in a very wise manner. And this is why the central bank governor, and rightly so, and the IMF have indicated to all of us who have these programmes that we must not use it for recurrent expenditure, because that is a bad practice and a bad advice. So we use it also for the payment of our debt. Now, the reason why we use it to pay our debt, is that you have some expensive debt. And if you can use the CBI funds to reduce on your debt stock, what happens? You will have less to pay every month. And that less you have to pay every month can now be used to better run and provide the goods and services for the country. You know, and so that is how we utilise the CBI funds. For example, next month, we will launch formally the pilot national health insurance scheme for single mothers in Dominica. And, we have utilised, we have set aside $5 million from the CBI to finance that pilot health insurance scheme. So, persons now who do not have health insurance, that programme, once you are registered, will help cover your medical bills, both here in Dominica, and if you have to go overseas for medical care. That pilot programme will help you. And the whole idea behind this is to see, through this pilot scheme, how well it is working, with the intention of having a national health insurance scheme. Because, my dear friends, I have seen personally, of people whom I know very well, and I'm sure you know, and some of you have experienced this, healthcare is very expensive these days. And, and I have seen people gone from having a decent sum of money in the bank to no money in the bank, because somebody in the family got sick, and they had to use the money. I have seen people who cannot fix their homes, because they have used all of the money they have to send money overseas for medical care. And what we're seeking to do, is to ensure that those of us who do not have a health insurance, that that programme can help you and help your families access the best healthcare anyone can afford in the world. So, it is unwise for anybody to suggest that we should use the CBI funds for salary increases. Now, you can use the CBI funds in regards to salaries, if it is a one-time payment. But a salary increase becomes a recurrent matter. It goes every month and every year. And, I am a bit disappointed, and I respect unions, because they have their constituents, and they have the membership to represent. And they have to represent them with the robustness that they require to do it. So I am not, I'm not at a variance or disagreement with any union representing their constituents or the membership with the vigour and determination which they have to. So that's their right to do. But, I believe that we must allow the process to go through. As far as I know, there has been no breakdown in negotiations between the government and the public service union. They have their meeting, and if there is a breakdown, then the matter is referred to the Prime Minister, who will then intervene. Because government, from, from way back, have in place a government negotiating team. And that team comprises of the Secretary to the Cabinet, the Financial Secretary, and the Chief Personal Officer. Now, the unions will make an offer or request, and the government team will make a counter offer. That's negotiation. Then you sit down, and you discuss, and you argue, and you fight, and you make noise, and you, and you, and you, you get up, and you walk out, and you come back inside, and you negotiate, and so forth. And to see how close, or how far you guys can get in the negotiations. But what Mr Littering is doing by involving partisan politics in the union and the negotiations is a dangerous thing. And, and, um, and and I have had, in the past, occasions to meet with the unions myself, to negotiate with them. And at every time the unions have met with me to negotiate, they have left more than satisfied with the government when we negotiated them and so forth. So, we not, and if you were to ask me, as a citizen of the country, and the Prime Minister of the country, do public officers require a raise? I would first tell you, yes. I would first tell you that public servants require a raise. Because there are some who are working very hard, um, extra mile, and who a raise would do very well. But at the end of the day, my friends, we have to look at the overall welfare of the country. When you give a raise that you cannot afford, how are you going to sustain it? You're going to now have to get taxes to be able to pay for it. So either new taxes, or increase the existing taxes. And, and it is not a road that the government wants to go. Because let us understand it, my dear friends. The calculated attack on the CBI by the UDOTP leadership, and financed by people external to Dominica, who are foreign to Dominica, who do not have any one of you's interest here, in Dominica. Or, or in Marigot, or anywhere else in Dominica. Who are seeking to destroy the country, and destroy the CBI. I am saying to you, the people of Dominica, that their campaign will have a negative impact on the revenue coming from the CBI. As a matter of fact, I now have to recalculate, I have now to recalculate the amount of money that I intended to give to the Manufacturers Association. Because now I have to now project less from what I'm going to raise from the CBI, because of this attack on, on, from CBS programme... because of this attack on CBS program by Alex Dinton and all of these guys who are writing on the blogs attacking the CBI program. Because as you know, bad news travels the world further than good news. And you now have to spend, you now have to spend monies to do damage control at Alex Dinton and the workers party, of course. You see? And I have to embark very soon on, on, on a number of visits across the world to meet with the stakeholders of the CBI, who are involved in the CBI program to reassure them of the government's program. But, so these are the things that we have to be mindful about. So you cannot use the CBI funds for recurrent expenditure. It, it, it should be used for, for capital projects because today, the CBI program is doing well, tomorrow you may raise no money from it. And if you are going to hang your hat on CBI money, then one day you may find that you cannot reach your hat. And, and therefore, we have to be very careful. We've talked about, "Oh, we have CBI money spent for this." We, we have to be responsible in our country. And we have to be very careful sometimes what we ask the government for. Because what we ask the government for may not be in your best interest. It is similar to, it is similar sometimes. We pray every day for something and that something never comes. Because the good Lord believes that it may not be good for you at this particular time. You understand? So you know, everything that we wish for, we want, want to have. I also want to say to you, my dear friends, that the government is looking at a number of measures we believe that would help address the concerns of the citizens in respect to cost of living, in respect to the cost of living. And I'm hoping that in the budget of this year, we will have some recommendations to the parliament on how we can, how we believe we can help alleviate the challenges confronting families in respect to the cost of living. But what we have done to assist families is to, is by introducing programs to cause them to keep more of their money in their pockets. And when you look at the Yesteryear program, you look at the school transportation program, you look at the scholarships we grant to students across Dominica, things which the families would have had to fetch for themselves, the government is assisting them, which means they are able to keep the money in their pockets and improve themselves otherwise. So that's what we're doing. When we remove the income tax on people's pensions, because I was shocked to have learned when I became Minister of Finance that people who work so hard for the country and who paid the taxes were paying taxes on their pensions. And I said, "But that should not be, that's an unjust system." And immediately, the government went to the parliament and removed the income tax on everybody's pension in Dominica. And then we went further for the working people. And we increased the tax threshold. When we came into office, I believe the tax threshold may have been about $8,000 or thereabouts. And we increased it progressively. To the point where today, as we speak tonight, the tax threshold on people's income now in Dominica is, is at $25,000 per annum. Which means that anybody in Dominica who is earning $25,000 or less pays no income tax in Dominica. So, and those of us who earn more than $25,000 a year, your first $25,000 is yours, there is no tax on it. You understand? And we went further and we reduced on the rates, because you have rates. We reduced on the rates of income tax in Dominica. So in every stage, the working people of Dominica have benefited from the government's programs in the country. When we came, when I also investigated as the Minister of Finance, and I saw what people were getting from social security, we immediately, we made, made to set up a system where for the government pensioners, that they will receive a minimum $200 pension in Dominica. And in going across Dominica, several people who would have met me and said, "Security, I work for Public Works on the road, I build this school, I do this road, and I'm getting no monies from social security." And that's how we brought about the allowance for the people 70 and over. And in the first year we introduced it, it was set at $200 and a year or so later, we increased it to $300. Now, that is a, for some people say, "What is $300?" But for those who would not get anything, $300 is a lot of money for them. And the other point, the other point, ladies and gentlemen, is that, the other point is that in the last budget address, we also increased the minimum pension that people can get in Dominica. I, I, people who work in the quarantine department and even under the government housing loan board, where we have placed monies there at 4% interest, we went to the parliament to amend the Government Housing Loan Act to allow for non-established workers in the public service to contract loans, mortgages for the government housing loan board. That is something that could never happen because the law did not allow it. But you had people working in the system for so many years and couldn't get a loan from the government housing loan board. And we were able to implement this program. This quarter regulation, regulation program where people were squatting after Hurricane David. And if you look at Fakali now and you compare Fakali pictures 10 years ago to now, you will see the big houses building up in Fakali because we sold the land to the people at $1, but they were able to take a valuation of $8 and $10 to the bank for the land and get a loan to build the homes on the, on the properties now as a result of the government providing its support to them. The other point I would like to draw to your attention, my dear friends, is in respect to electoral reform. And to say to you that the government, the cabinet, has approved an amount approximately to $1.6 million to the electoral office for the design and development of a biometric ID management system to provide for national ID cards. And they should, they have already placed the order with a company, but the government has made that money as a step towards ensuring that everybody could have an ID and by the next election, it'll be held in Dominica. And this talk about this care mongering that the Workers' Party has about the economic citizens who will come to Dominica to vote. Our laws are very clear. Our laws are very clear. There is a qualification process for anybody to register to vote as, as, as to vote in Dominica. You have to live in Dominica for a period of time. And they are giving people an impression that the people who are now become citizens and resident elsewhere, on election they will come and vote in Dominica. This cannot happen. It is just an attempt to try to mislead our people and get them to have a different view of the government and the government's efforts towards assisting the country. So I'm saying to my friends that our election laws provide for a qualification process to be able to vote in our elections in Dominica. And if you become a citizen, if you become a citizen whether by birth or through naturalization or through the CBI program, if you are not resident in Dominica for a period of time, you cannot vote in Dominica. But interestingly, because our, our laws allow for Commonwealth citizens to vote in our elections. So if you are from Zimbabwe or South Africa and you're resident here for a period of time, you can register and you can vote. Our, our, our laws make, make provisions for that, I believe the constitution speaks to that, um, particular point. Now, now there's been a lot of talk about international airport. And you don't be saying they will build an international airport if they will come into office. Now, the moment they heard, the moment they heard me say that we'll be having a presentation on the 21st of April from a firm we have engaged with, States of America, who have, who have done all the studies for us, because what we have done for the cabinet is that we have engaged a firm, a highly reputable firm, United States of America, and they've been conducting studies for the last several months in Dominica. And they have done the soil testing, they have done the wind testing, they've done a number of stuff. And they have told us they, they have been able to find a proper landing pad or route for the airport in Dominica. And they're satisfied that we can place the airport in a particular location in Dominica. And they will be here on the 21st of April to do a presentation to the cabinet on their findings and recommendations on the way forward. But once we mention that, now, once we mention that, they are saying now, they are saying, their, their concern now is, where will you get the money to do it? You understand, where will you get the money to do it? Now, I wanted to ask them, where will they have gotten the money to build it themselves? Because they've been talking about international airport. But I can say to you, I can say to you that this international airport will become a reality for Dominica. And I shall focus my energies to ensuring that we can get the funding to build this international airport for our people. So rest assured of that, my dear brothers and sisters. Just to come back to the, come back to the CBI matter, I want to assure you, the citizens of Dominica, the residents of Roto Central, that this government, as the Minister for Foreign Affairs indicated, this government is running a transparent CBI program that meets the test of scrutiny of any independent agency or country. Because we understand, first of all, how important the CBI program is to Dominica at this time. And we have always indicated to the country that the prudent and responsible management of Dominica is critical, especially for small island states. Because we understand the rules of engagement for small island states compared to the bigger powers are different. And we have to be extraordinarily careful and responsible in the way we conduct affairs of our country. And when people talk this nonsense about the monies are coming to our accounts and the monies are being siphoned, that's, that's nonsense. I can tell you, for me to know how much money we have in the bank, I must ask the financial secretary to tell me. I have no access to the accounts, I do not even know the account numbers of the bank. I cannot call the manager of the bank and ask them, "Well, boss man, how much money the government has there?" I send a memo to the FS or I call the FS and I say, "Can you tell me how much money we have in this account and that account at the banks?" So I can know how much money the government has, the Minister of Finance. I am not a signatory, neither any minister is a signatory to any account. So if that is how they were running the CBI program in their days, I can tell them that this government is vastly different in the operations and management of Dominica. And on the point of, on the point of, of issuance of passport, there is only one entity in the Commonwealth of Dominica, one entity which issues passports on behalf of the state, that is the Immigration Department at the police headquarters. We issue passports nowhere else in the world except at the Immigration Department. No minister is involved in issuing the passport except the Minister of National Security who is required to sign on service and diplomatic passports. But the processing of these passports are done at the Immigration Department. And ministers will tell you that if they apply for a passport and the picture is not up to the requirements, it is sent back to you. I had a picture sent back to me because they say, "Well, it was too clear" or "I was smiling too much." I mean, they send back to you. So we are not treated differently from any other person in the country because the system is set up such that if you put their picture in, the system will reject it. And, and so this inspector at immigration is not being troublesome when he asks you to take another picture. Because if he proceeds with the application, it will be rejected by the computerized system. It is so, it's a program such that it has to be a particular way. So that's the only place where we issue the passports. So if under the UDOT, issuing passports all over Dominica and over the world, I can say to you very clearly that this is not the practice of this Labour Party administration in Dominica. On the issue of, of, of the cleanliness of the city and carnival and, um, carol festival, I really want to commend the leadership of Minister Robbie Towne. Because he has taken a very personal and keen interest in ensuring that the city remains clean. And he is personally spearheading the teams and I must commend all of you who are engaged in this program um, to ensure the cleanliness of the city. And they have extended their boundaries to under the cliff. That's why you see on the cliff, there's no grass on the cliff. It's not growing, every two weeks or three weeks, they're cutting the grass on the cliff. And you, you, when you drive under the cliff, you feel a sense of cleanliness in the city and so forth. So I really want to commend Robbie for his leadership and for the mayor. The mayor was on the streets on carnival Monday morning, at 2:00 in the morning, ensuring that her teams also do the job and so on. So I want to commend the mayor for that. But through Robbie's leadership, we're able to increase the budget for carol festival and for carnival. And we all will agree that these two national events have been dubbed by independent observers as having been very, very successful in our country. And I can say to you, if you think carol festival was very successful and of a high standard last year, wait for 2017 and you will see. And on the light side, some said the prime minister should not jump in carnival. But, so, so I said to some people, I said to some people, "Why is it priests jumping?" Pastor drinking their rum. You see what I'm saying? And, and as you would say in local parlance, "Aida na." So, my dear friends, I want to thank you the vast majority of Dominicans who continue to remain positive on the country and who continue to stand in defense and solidarity of our country. Because rest assured, rest assured, that their terms by the opposition is to destroy the country with the hope that it can be destroyed to the point where you, the majority Dominicans, will lose confidence and trust in the government and vote them in. But we all, we all, we all have ears to hear and we all have eyes to see. And those of us who are, who are challenged by the site have a sense of smell and understanding. So we sense what's happening, we know what's happening. And their campaign is merely to destroy our, our economy. Because I cannot understand, it is beyond my comprehension to understand why would some people who claim to love this country to partner with people out there? to partner with people out there who are only bent on destroying Dominica? And you know, they're searching every dustbin, in every drain, in every manhole, looking for something negative of Dominica to parade around the world. You understand? And and when they are faced with the facts and the truth, they run away from it. They run away from it. And because, and they say, "Oh, someone, someone in the diaspora, who would like to come back to Dominica, but they want to come back, or they can't come back?" Okay. You know? So, so you know, but I want to say to you, my dear friends, I want to say to you that this country of ours, many of us, the majority of us, have nowhere else to go but Dominica. So we have to understand that what the Udelpe is doing is beyond politics. You had the Freedom Party in office for fifteen long years, and the Labour Party had one seat sometimes, four seats sometimes. And they would go to the parliament, and they would banter each other. But always done with a sense of humanism. Miss Charles would put blows on Mike Douglas. Mike would put blows on Charles Mairan. But at the end of the day, they would meet in the corridor and laugh and smile. You understand? Laugh and smile. But with these guys, you see, when you look at the Labour Party, and I said this point during the campaign, but in the campaign, sometimes, things are hot and we don't really hear all the messages sometimes. When you look at the candidates on the Udelpe in the last election, ninety percent of them were people who were looking for a job. And they believe that their savior is to get into politics. When you look at the Labour Party, all of us left the job to come into politics. All of us made sacrifices to come into politics. For me, when I came into politics in nineteen ninety-nine, it was launched in December nineteen ninety-nine, I, my salary at the college and my salary as a minister, my salary as a minister was a couple hundred dollars more than at the college at the time. And I gave up a scholarship from the World Bank to go and do my masters and my PhD in education to get involved in politics. Lennox Dinton cannot speak of any sacrifice he has made to come into politics. Zero. Zero commitment to this. And all they see is hoping that they can come into office and seek to plunder what the country has. So I am urging you, my dear brothers and sisters, that you must not fall for the propaganda. You must not fall for the propaganda. You can see and you can hear what this government is doing for you, the people of Dominica. And I give you the assurances, I give you the assurances, that my preoccupation always is about the people in Dominica who still require a better way of life. And what can the government do to help these people? So Austria is right when it tells you that at all hours of the night and day, I message the ministers. And I ask them about this person or that community or that project. Because we have a responsibility to the people of Dominica. And we have to do everything humanly possible to deliver to the people of Dominica. We have to make ourselves available to hear from them and to interact with them and to hear their concerns. Because that is what we elected to do. And I give you the firm assurances, as the littlest country, we will do everything with the help of God to fulfill our promises. Now, with everything, because the government is similar to your family, you have children, so, so I have seventy-two-thousand children, you have two or three at your home. But your children ask you for things, and you have to tell them, "Look, not this month, next month, or not this year, next year." Because you have prevailing expenses to deal with at a particular time. The government is no different. That's how the government operates. So sometimes, we make a promise to a community to do something, and may not be able to do it at a time. Because as the Minister of Finance, I must divert that money to something else. So for example, the person who has twenty-five thousand euros to travel somewhere, that's gonna have to impact on something somewhere else. Because all of the money is within one account in the treasury. So you have to now decide how you're gonna do it. So priorities change from time to time or shift it from time to time. But once we can, once we can handle the promises that we've made, we come back to them to seek to commit ourselves to those promises. So, once we make a promise, we will try our best to fulfill them. So we're committed to that, my dear friends. And we're committed to running the country in a prudent and responsible manner. But, and another difference between ourselves and the Udelpe, these guys, these guys go across the country, and they're not talking to people about how things are with them. You know, they're not talking, asking you how your family is. Have you ever met a Udelpe person to ask you about your family? Ask you whole things? All they engage you on is something negative, something destructive with the country. Nothing about you. They go to communities, and they speak nothing about the people's development. And the comparison to us is that when we come to communities, we tell you what we're doing for you, what we intend to do for you once we work together as a people in this country. And that's our commitment to you, my dear brothers and sisters. So, as, as Tousen Levitu, one of the revolutionary leaders of Haiti once said, and I quote what he said, "Whatever defamation of character my enemies are spreading about me, I do not feel the need to justify myself toward them." That's what Tousen Levitu said when he was being persecuted by the French in his efforts to create a better way of life for the Haitian people. I reiterate this point today, that I am not daunted, I am not deterred by the attacks the Udelpe put towards me. Christ, Christ was a perfect being. He allowed the blind to see, the lame to walk, he raised the dead to life, but yet still, he was crucified. So who am I, who am I, uh, mere mortal not to be crucified? But I always say too, that people are not burdened by people who are not successful. And it is because of our successful government, that's why they're attacking us as a government. So I tell them, I tell them, "Continue your attacks." Because it helps me to remain focused on my job. The job which the majority of Dominicans elected me to fulfill for them. And until that mandate is over, we shall remain in government. Thank you, and God bless you, my dear friends.